Sunny's here, she was across the street. Oh, okay. Oh, where's Jermana? Okay, we can start with that. I'd like to call this meeting to order the Caho County Council. This is a committee meeting of the whole in connection with a work section. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Madam President, Ms. Conley.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Jermana. Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Of quorum.
We are here for the purpose of, oh, we have public comments. Is there any public comment? We're here for the sole purpose of discussing the rules of the county council. We adopted a temporary set of rules at the beginning of the year, and we have been working with those rules and making some adjustments. So is there any public comment to the rules? If not, indicate that we are working off of, currently working off the substitute version, draft nine. I believe that Mr. Miller has a motion.
Madam President and my colleagues, I'd like to briefly summarize the latest draft, and then I'm going to make a motion to substitute the draft nine version for the draft eight version, so that the new version will be the one that's officially before the council for consideration. And first, I'd like to say that President Conley, Chairman Greenspan, Councilman Brady, Jean Schmotsch, Joanne Gross, and many other members and staff have put in huge numbers of hours on these rules, and these rules now belong to all of us, and hopefully, we're getting pretty close. The new draft, I'm going to summarize how the new draft differs from the interim rules that we're operating under, because there are some things that went into draft eight that were approved a long time ago, and we don't, might not even be aware of them. But the new draft only specifies that the procedure for electing the president and vice president of council will take place on the date of the organizational meeting. The presentation process that was to occur during the preceding month is eliminated. And second, in the event of a vacancy in the office of president of council, in the new draft, the vice president automatically succeeds. And this is to assure alignment with Section 2.04 of the Charter, which deals with what happens when the, when there's a vacancy for the executive and the council president succeeds to that office. Third, this draft provides for adding regular council meetings to the annual schedule. At such meetings, we will not have to suspend rules even when it's third reading. Fourth, the new draft says that the president may now call a special meeting by notifying the clerk, and there would be no restriction on what would be on the agenda. This allows us to hold meetings when we can foresee that there's a general volume of business that has to be dealt with. Fifth, this draft requires items for the agenda to be submitted to the clerk five days before a meeting to allow sufficient time to prepare the agenda. The interim rules do not have any such deadline. Six, committee assignments are for two years, not for one year as was in the, in our interim rules. Seventh, if you want to give recognition or condolence for a noteworthy event, you'll be able to do it in two ways. One would be a letter or proclamation which the president and you would sign. Or if it rises to the level of needing formal action by council, you'll be able to pass a ceremonial resolution. Next, motions of council and ceremonial resolutions are identified as forms of resolution which also require three readings or suspension to pass. This is required by Section 3.09 of the Charter, which says that all powers of the council shall be exercised by ordinance or resolution. Until the final vote on legislation, members will be able to add or remove their name as a sponsor by informing the clerk. Also, the president or chairperson of a committee will be able to accept short, clear verbal amendments so that we don't have to suspend rules for this purpose. Since this rule is not yet in place, I will offer a motion to allow verbal amendments to facilitate today's discussion. Next, separate committee reports regarding action taken on legislation will not be required. Within the minutes, a list of legislation heard and actions taken will be included. And if the committee accepts a new version for consideration, the new version will be attached to the minutes. Next, the term "journal of council" is changed to "record of council", reflecting that the official record may or may not be in a chronological format. Next, the rule concerning interim executive appointments is deleted. We felt it better not to encourage this practice by providing a rule for it. Next, public presenters at council meetings will be given three minutes rather than two minutes as time seems available. And finally, where a specific requirement is not provided, suspension of the rules will require two-thirds of members present following Robert's rules rather than two-thirds of all members of a council or committee. With a few more changes that we will make today, I believe these rules will serve us well. And therefore, I move to substitute rules of council draft nine for draft eight, the committee version, making draft nine the version of the rules of council that is officially before the council.
Is there a second? I move by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion? And what we're going to be doing now is going through these if we pass this motion. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have anything further, Mr. Miller?
Don't think so, not at this time.
All right, here's what I'd like to do after great thought and deliberation. You have proposed version number nine, and you also have my little cheat sheet that I made up indicating the changes. Some of these are very perfunctory, and we can just kind of go through these, and we'll stop when there are ones that would be cause for more discussion. So for instance, I'm on page one of 23. We did go from 34 to 23 pages, which means something. Item one, if you go to page one, item eight, under executive, originally, it said elected executive, and we changed it to executive to mean the person that's, the executive pursuant to Article II, because theoretically, you could have a council step into the executive position if the executive were elected president or whatever. All right, any problem with that? Item 10 on the same page. This is where we change from journal of council to record of council. And I don't know, Jean, do you want to address this at this point? Because it's going to come up a number of places. There was a definition of journal of council that was fairly extensive, and Jean was having problems as to how we were going to comply with that rule. So, Jean, if you want to go ahead.
Basically, I think it had to do with having different readings of all the legislation and keeping an agenda along with its, all of its pieces of legislation throughout the reading in a chronological order, when in fact, we have all of the different items that would be required or would want to be in a quote "journal", and we have all of those electronic as well as we can have a paper copy as well as we have everything on the council's website. And so, it has always been in my experience that the exact journal of council was really the actions that were taken by council, and all those were bound and the legislative piece of that. And so, knowing that we have all of the documents and keep all of the documents that were required to keep the documents under our retention schedule is the fact that we have them, but are they in a chronological order would be the difficulty with, you know, limited staff and trying to make sure that all that fell into place. So we felt that the simple version was to have the documents on hand and for, if the public needed them or wanted them or requested them, but not to actually have them in what's called a journal of council.
Okay, any problem with that? All right, item number 11 on the same page. We deleted the word proclamation from that section. And proclamation is deleted from another, a number of other places because we basically replaced proclamation with ceremonial resolution. Is that correct?
Madam President, we wanted to distinguish between a proclamation and in Rule 1E, we provide for that any member can request a proclamation, letter of condolence, or a letter of congratulations, which would not be an action by the full council. It would just be a document that would be prepared and the council president and the member would sign. Now, we also provided for that some really noteworthy event might occur where you decide that some formal action by the full council needs to be taken. So for that purpose, we changed what had been called a proclamation and used the name ceremonial resolution. It's basically the same thing as what it was, but that's an item that the full council would pass at a council meeting. So we use these two different descriptions to distinguish the two different kinds of action.
All right, so we just deleted the word proclamation from that section. All right, if you go to-
Excuse me, Madam President, if I may, I'd just like to acknowledge that Mr. Jermana did join the committee meeting at 4:05 PM, and I want to make sure that that was in the record of him being here.
All right, if you go to page two of 23.
President?
Yes.
I had a question on the proclamation before we move on, if I may. Are we, I guess I'm looking at version draft nine, 1E, and I see that the proclamation is still in the body of 1E. That stays, correct?
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, the term proclamation is supposed to remain in 1E because that's, that's the form where it's, where it's done without an action by the full council. It's simply a document that's prepared and signed by the president of council and the sponsoring member. Later on in Section seven of the rules, where it gets to the various kind of actions that the full council can take, then you get to what's called a ceremonial resolution, which would be when the, when we want to honor something and do it by a full council action as opposed to just a document that's prepared and signed.
Yeah, but are we deleting proclamation all the way through the document? Because what she's saying is right, proclamation is still in Rule 1E. So should we take it out of 1E also? Which would, which would make that 1E on page three to read, "The president may, on the request of any member, sign letters of condolences or letters of commendation or condolence rather than signed proclamations."
Madam President, I think it should be there. The proclamation's different than the ceremonial thing.
Okay.
So, but it's out of the heading. Do we want to put it back in 1E? Letters of commendation, comma, condolence, and proclamation? It's in the body of it.
That would make sense.
Put it on the heading?
Yes, 1E.
Okay. All right, item four on my list will probably be of some discussion. This is on page two, members of, members of council. I question the necessity, do we need Rule 1A and Rule 1B at all? Rule 1A says, "Member conduct. Members shall at all times conduct themselves with courtesy and respect for their fellow officeholders, the executive and members of administration, county employees, and the public, and shall discharge their duties in accordance with the high public trust placed in them." 1B, "Members shall have equal status, privilege, and rights regardless of any position in the council to which a member has been elected or appointed." Ms. Simon.
Madam President, I don't disagree with you. I'm not sure why we need that language. We all, it's self-evident. And I see a contradiction in 1B that if we're all, I think the president has different rights than the rest of us, so that's even contradictory to the rest of the rules. I just don't know why we need to have something that's self-evident.
Mr. Jermana?
Madam Chair, here we go again.
Here we go again.
Here we go again. I wish I would have said something first. But I've been on city councils where not everyone is courteous. People have got agendas. There's political, you know, we have shown professionalism because we're professionals here, but not everyone's created equal. And, you know, if it should happen that you have a county council person, man or woman, that's got a political agenda or is a mistake, I don't see you with setting a standard for this council as far as proper decorum. Now, you know, we probably don't have any rules punishing anybody for breaking this rule of council, but I see nothing wrong with holding out and having professional standards. This is what we expect. We don't, we don't expect council members to try to politically assassinate or question the motives of what one person is saying or anything like that. So I have no problem with it.
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I have to agree with Councilman Jermana on Rule 1A. However, on Rule B, I have to agree with Ms. Simon that it does appear that we do give additional privileges to the council president. So I think that we have to think about that. The council president has the ability to create committees and wins to committee chairs and gets the bigger office, things like that, so.
Which is also used as the conference room.
But yes, I would have to question Rule 1B.
Those are privileges or responsibilities? I actually have a lot more work to do. But I agree with, my, my problem with this is there's no sanctions. How do you pick a rule that there's no sanctions if the person breaks them?
Chairperson.
Yes, Mr. Brady?
Just I suppose we should all speak up if we want to. I think that Councilman Rogers is correct that no harm done with Rule 1A. Whether it's necessary or not, no harm done. 1B, I would suggest that we just remove rather than try to wordsmith it. It's also self-evident, but in order to, in order to, than trying to wordsmith the council presidency's, the distinction of the council presidency, just remove 1B and keep 1A. That's what I would suggest.
Mr. Jermana?
I have no problem with removing 1B.
President? I would like to make a motion to amend draft nine and remove Rule 1B.
Second.
Now, we're committee the whole, because we can take a vote, right? Okay, all right. Is there any more discussion on that? All right, all of us in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, Rule 1B is gone.
Madam President?
Yes.
With regard to 1A, this is a little different from the discussion we had regarding the, I think it was the ethics code, where there was an actual sanction. Since this is just a state, an statement without a repercussion, I'm not going to have a big problem with keeping in this language. That's a difference from sending this to the IG, so it's fine.
Can we just leave this one in? All right, moving right along. Item five on my list, page three of 23. "Section relating to the office of the council has been substantially changed. The new section provides for an election of the organization, election at the organizational meeting in January and delete the advisory election prior to the commencement of the term of office." Any discussion on that? That was the whole section where we're going to have this meeting. There's like days in November and an advisory vote and rather, which, which, what we set up early on and Mr. Miller and I, and I think the clerk, and we discussed that, you know, we're just, the election will be held in January at the first organizational meeting and let whatever happens, happens. Okay, all right. Number six, which is on page four of 23, item 2G. This is a change from the original proposed rule. This new provision provides for the president pro temp will serve out the term of the present. When I get elected, me or the city of Cleveland and, yeah, okay.
Yes.
And move out of this office, then the, Ms. Simon or whoever, the president pro temp would then serve out the term of the present. At the earlier version had a provision that the, there would be a separate election and a new term. So this would be consistent with the charter, is what Mr. Miller said. Any discussion on that? Okay, item seven, Rule 3A1. Delete the requirement that the clerk attend all committee meetings. Items seven and eight reflect changes according to the, regarding the record of council. Yet Rule, the original Rule 3A1 said that the clerk had to attend every meeting of council, and this provides for the clerk or her designee. Because I guess someone could challenge if the clerk wasn't there, was it a proper meeting? This just provides for her designee, which is what we've been doing all the time. Item eight on my list, which refers to item 10 on the same page, allows for the clerk to send designees to committee meetings, which is provided in the earlier version. Okay, Rule 3B. This rule had to do with the employment of staff. And the earlier version had a provision that essentially, the council would handle the human resource aspect of those employees. And this new version allows that the employees of the council then would be under the Human Resource Commission and follow those rules rather than us having to have separate rules. Okay? And item two on that same page actually is new. And that provides for determination of compensation. Okay? We're still on page five of 23. 3B2, that's what I just said, that's a new one, okay. Item 5A provides that outgoing council, okay, this is what I, that Mr. Brady and I discussed. Rule 5A provides that the schedule for the next year will be set in January with, and conceivably, those could be the outgoing members of council. My question was, should the schedule of meetings be set by the newly elected members?
Madam Council President, just for clarification, if any is needed. The present rules say that we would, as a council, establish the schedule for the following year, and that would be done by a lame duck council. Well, it may be the same folks, but it might not be. In this, by changing it, we simply leave it up to the people who have been elected and sworn in at the beginning of January, which possibly could also involve new leadership, of course. And so that the elected council can make its own schedule rather than have it, having been made by the lame duck council. And it's really only a matter of a couple of months, anyway. I don't know what we really gained by knowing by November the 30th what our schedule's going to be the next year.
Mr. Miller and Mr. Schron?
Madam President and my colleagues, I would, I would argue for the existing procedure, which was, which was recommended by transition. And I think we ought to see the, the council as a continuous body. That's, that's one of the reasons why we went to some pains to set up staggered terms, so that we know that no more than half of the council's going to turn over at any one time. And in terms of, of the public and the administration planning for meetings and legislation, I think that, that people are going to want to know in December when the meetings are in January. The, the new, the new draft rules make it clear that the, that the council at any time can amend the schedule. And if the, and if the new council coming in doesn't like the schedule that was posted, they can pass a motion to council and, and set up a new one. But I think to, to set the schedule for the following year, a month before the year begins, at least in a preliminary fashion, so that people can plan their schedules, I, I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Schron?
I would, I think that the suggestion of Councilman Brady is one that makes sense to me, isn't it? That you're only talking 30 days subsequent to that. Everything else of a significant nature is taking place at an organizational meeting. Why wouldn't you do this? And I'm not a big fan of one body binding a body in the future that doesn't, that is not sitting there. The body that takes place on January 1st should be the body that binds itself, it seems to me, at that organizational meeting. So I would recommend that we go with the change to select that at the organizational meeting.
I agree with Mr. Miller.
I disagree with Mr. Miller and agree with Mr. Brady.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I would bring to everybody's attention that, that we're only going to have an organizational meeting once every other year. And so, if we, if we make the change that's being contemplated, we're not going to, we're not going to set the schedule until the first meeting of the year, even in years where there's no, no organizational meeting and it's totally continuous.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Simon?
I still don't see how that changes having consistency for the new members who were elected in November to be a part of perhaps the discussion of what the schedule's going to be. I don't see any harm in moving this to the 30th, but I see a benefit to moving it to the 30th. So I agree with-
You're saying what?
To, I agree with the change. I said there's no benefit to keeping it where it currently is, but I see a benefit to amend it to make it November 30th, as you have stated in this. Am I looking at the wrong?
Well, we want to say, we want, I would say it should be, the schedule should be set-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the organizational meeting or the first meeting of the year. So the years we have organizational meeting would be the organizational meeting or the first meeting of the year.
Yeah, why not? I don't see, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. I don't see any argument not to move it. A benefit to moving it.
Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam President. I would, I'm kind of, I have a hybrid alternative here in that the greater good of the county is based on continuity. And I would be in favor of moving it to the organizational meeting and leave it there, not every year. That way, at least for a two-year period, there's a set schedule. So the county knows, and the clerk will know, exactly when legislation and their clocks and their schedules can be amended accordingly. We know that every two years, we're going to have changes in committee chairs, possibly. It's, which very well may start changing the flow of committee meetings, which is going to have an impact on the staff as it is. I would recommend that, that we change it to the organizational meeting and the schedule is set for a two-year period. So for example, our schedule is- So for example, our schedule is the second and fourth Tuesday for a council meeting and it's known in advance, right?
This rule only refers to regular meetings of council.
Right. No, I understand, but I'm just taking the continuity of government, argument one step further. So I would be in favor of altering it, amending this to read at the organizational meeting, which by definition is held every two years.
Madam Chairperson.
Mr. Brady.
I am amenable to Mr. Greenspan's proposal and I think that it would be presumed that the schedule's going to be the same anyway. But there would be, you know, so no need for a November 30th meeting to decide that. But if the council wanted to change its schedule, it would have that opportunity every, and I think every two years is appropriate. It's a, that's the cycle.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just don't see why this needs to be this difficult. There might be a holiday that falls on a Tuesday. In my city council in South Euclid, every year in January, we just looked at the calendar and kept it the same, but if there was a Jewish holiday perhaps falling on a Monday where we had our council meetings, we would just kick it to the next day. So I think, you know, with that respect, every January, just look at the calendar, make sure there's no holiday that's falling on a Tuesday or anything significant and it's not that complicated and government goes on. I mean, this continuity thing, I mean, we'll have continuity, but we don't want to, you know, overlap in significant days of holidays of worship. So it shouldn't be that hard. Every January, just look at the calendar and make sure there's nothing falling on a Tuesday.
Well, Mr., Madam Chairperson, Councilman Miller has already appropriately pointed out that, we don't, this isn't difficult. Oh, if we want to move a council meeting, we can move a council meeting. I mean, there's not a, nothing is set in stone here.
Are there going to be a motion then that there's a suggestion that we do this for the two years, that we do it in January with every two years?
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we amend Rule 5A, replace the words "no later than November 30th" of each year to be replaced with "at the organizational meeting of council." I believe that's all we would need because the organizational meeting is defined as being every two years.
Are you in discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Miller.
I can tell that I'm losing this argument, but before we vote on it, I just want to make sure that, I don't remember, I want to make sure that the charter doesn't require us to set the schedule on an annual basis if someone, yeah.
It might be. I didn't bring a charter. So that we can say "at the organizational meeting" or "the first meeting of the year", whichever comes first.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Germana.
You know, there's a lot of things in the hopper. I mean, we're catching up because of the new government, but you know, now that we're here, you know, there's a flow of first reading, second reading, third reading. And Rule 5C1 says the council can change it at any time. You know, I, whatever we pick, whatever anybody's happy with, but we always could change it. If we have five new members of council and there's some good reasons to change the meeting, even if it's set, we're going to do it to accommodate good business reasons. So I really don't care which way we go, but I think there is an advantage to doing it before the end of the year because of scheduling contracts that'll be presented to council and going through committees and so on and so forth. You know, next election cycle should just carry on business as usual.
Do we check the charter?
Madam President, there's no problem with the charter.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion? You want to call for a vote?
Madam Chair, I'll at least chime in. I do support Councilman Miller in that transition is recommended, there is a certain continuity that's in place as a result. And it's not binding. It can change and those new councilmen that come in will have an opportunity at the end of two years to weigh in on the same decision. So I actually do support.
According to this, it's each year, though.
Has to be each year?
Rule, if you keep Mr. Miller's rule, it's each year. No later than November 30th, each year.
Well, actually, I do support the two-year, two-year option, kind of the hybrid of the continuity is what's important.
That two-year be picked in the January session with the new council. Okay. All right. All those in favor of Mr. Greenspan's amendment? Do you want to repeat that, or, yeah, do you want to repeat that, Mr. Greenspan?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. It's to, in Rule 5A, to replace "no later than October 30th" of each year with "at the organizational meeting of council." At the organizational meeting.
And that'd be the next two, for the two years.
Right.
All right.
President?
Yes.
I would ask if the sponsor would accept a friendly amendment, there's a place later on where we talk about amending the schedule and it refers to amending the annual schedule and it's no longer an annual schedule, it would be a biennial schedule. So it would be to just change, change a word there, to change annual to biennial so that it were consistent.
Question, with that, are you talking about, Mr. Miller, in the Rule 5A heading, "biannual schedule," adding the word "biannual," the word "biannual" in the heading? That's actually what we're doing.
I'm talking, I'm talking about there and I'm also talking about in Rule 5C.
5C and two and 5C3 are new.
And in 5C2 and 5C3, it says the council may add additional regular council meetings to the annual schedule, you know, so we would want to change that to the biennial schedule.
We'll have to amend that when we get there.
Okay. All right, ready for a vote? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose?
No.
All right, indicate Mr. Germana and Mr. Miller voted no. All right, the motion carries. All right, if you go to Rule 5C2 and 3, these are new additions and we added them and we'll have to add "biannual" as Mr. Miller indicated. This allows us to add a regular meeting without it being a special meeting because every time we have to add a special meeting, then we have to go through the suspending of the rules at every single item. So this just allows us to add another regular meeting without going through the special meeting. And of course, these will be noticed and indicated on the schedule and they'll be done in time to comply with all the notification rules. And this provides for the change from the, and this will be, provides for the change in Rule 3C. Any problem with that?
Madam President, the change will be biannual from annual to biennial because if we say biannual, that means twice a year. So it'll be biennial is the word there.
Do we need to vote on that or can we just go by consensus? If you go down this Rule 5E on the same page, six of 23, there was a requirement in the original rule that when there was a request for a special meeting, the president must notify the clerk in writing. This is just notification to the clerk and everything else stays the same. If five members want to have a special meeting and there's a written request and a specification and that all remains the same. Item 5H, I'm sure will be a matter of discussion. That's on the top of page seven of 23. This relates to the excused absences. My suggestion is that the rule would read, "Members are expected to attend all regular council meetings," and then delete the next sentence and say, "Absences may be excused by parliamentary motion. The clerk shall record the absences." I would delete the section that provides that "no later than the second regular meeting following a meeting at which a member is absent, the council may vote to excuse the member's absence. Before a vote is taken to excuse the absence, the member who was absent must file a written explanation with the clerk who shall provide a copy of the explanation to all members." I don't think that's necessary and I'm sure there'll be lively debate on that.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll open, I'll open the lively debate.
Okay.
I'll just give everybody a little bit of history. Back in, back in December when we started developing these rules, we put the early draft out to public comment and we emailed it to all the transition volunteers. And the draft at that point read basically the same as what the change that's being talked about, that we would just pass a motion excusing the absence. I got more public comment about that than anything else. People were aware that what the legislative bodies typically do is they just perfunctorily excuse absences, which makes the, makes the stuff that's in the charter about missing three consecutive meetings and other things that most legislative bodies has essentially meaningless. And they sent us a clear message that they wanted us to take it more seriously and they actually supported more than what's in here. But the current rule simply says that the person who's absent has to report the reason for the absence and then after the reason is reported, then the council can vote on it. And, you know, I actually don't have a personal strong feeling about it, but I try to be deferential to the public and this is a sore spot for the public. So that's why, that's why I'm in favor of keeping this rule as it is in Draft 9 rather than changing it.
Mr. Schron.
Madam President, I guess I agree that the public has a right to know a lot of things about all the aspects, but if you're going through a personal medical procedure and you have to provide a written explanation to all your members of council that might be of a private nature, whether it be cancer or any other kind of treatment, that becomes in a public record and a public document, public information. We would not advise that in my personal business side. As a matter of fact, you're prohibited from having those in the same even record jacket as your personnel record in a private organization. They have to be specifically protected and excluded into a separate section. I would, if you're in favor of knowing a piece of information, I would highly suggest that we keep, find some way of structuring personal information of that nature in such a way that perhaps it goes to the president or goes to some way that goes into a personnel jacket so that it is not something that the world wants to know whether you're having a personal medical care or something involving a family member that you're going to go seek out. And then from my personal business standpoint, those of us who run personal businesses, I don't want my competitor knowing that I'm going to potentially talk to another company that I'm thinking about buying or an organization or a structure out there. Now, if you're saying that we, it can be such a perfunctory nature that I'm going on a business meeting, then that would be an acceptable thing, but you surely do not want necessarily to have to reveal a piece of information. I'm sure that the attorneys here who might be going out to take depositions in another state or they might be going someplace to do some investigation on a case matter, you don't want that to be revealed. So to what degree this communication, it says provide a written explanation, when you have to do that, to that level of degree, it has all kinds of potential problems on it.
Any other, Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I agree and support Councilman Schron's explanation why this amendment that you suggest, Madam President, would be acceptable. I mean, it's just way too much information that would be in the public record and we are professional, it's in the rules, we show up and council can excuse or not excuse us if we make a habit out of this, but I think we're all pretty committed to this job.
Mr. Brady?
I think that the charter is clear enough on this issue in terms of how many meetings you can miss. And I think we have enough collective common sense to know when something might be amiss where that is being abused in a way that needs to be dealt with internally by the council. And while I certainly respect any feedback by the public, sort of anecdotal comments by the public are not any kind of empirical evidence of what public sentiment is on these issues. And so I would agree with Councilman Schron and Councilman Simon.
Mr. Greenspan.
Madam President, I just have a question. If we're removing the timeframe, what's the mechanism now that would be in place?
Members are attended, are expected to attend regular meetings and then we moved down, "absences may be excused by a parliamentary motion." And I think that's what we did last week when Mr. Schron was unavailable. We made a motion to excuse him and it was recorded in the record.
Madam President, so there's no timeframe then? I guess we're removing the timeframe in which an absence would be excused.
Right. I mean, someone could, someone could be in an emergency and he doesn't show up, he or she doesn't show up, we find that later they were in a car accident or whatever, their plane didn't arrive or whatever, and we could excuse them at the next meeting.
Madam President? I would, I would recommend that if, that if you're not going to keep the provision on the explanation, that we at least keep the timeframe because there could be, there could be something that wouldn't look proper where the council could go back and excuse some absences that might not have occurred, might have occurred six months ago. You know, I think that if, if an absence is going to be excused, it should be relatively promptly, like it says here. I mean, it could be on the same day of the meeting or it could be the next meeting or as it says here, not later than the second regular meeting.
Madam President?
Simon.
I'm not sure why it needs to be within that timeframe. Why not at the end of the year, the 12th in December, just have a list of the absences and we, as a body, can excuse or not excuse? I'm not sure why it needs to be so timely. Why don't we just see where we are at the end of the year?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Greenspan.
I would agree with Mr. Miller that we need to have some timeframe. I'm in agreement with the motion, with the discussion, except for the timeframe. The explanation would be, and just to continue on with Ms. Simon's comment, if you wait till the end of the year and it could be a year in which a council member is not seeking reelection, they effectively could, would be excused from council for an entire year, not having to show up or participate if the excuse doesn't come until the end of the year.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I think that Councilman Miller offers an acceptable compromise. I don't agree, though, about the end of the year business because the charter does state if you miss three meetings, you've got a problem. So you couldn't just wait till the end of the year and not have an excuse under the current charter. But I think Mr. Miller's, has a very acceptable, I think, that within a time, within a reasonable timeframe.
So it says, "Members are expected to attend all regular meetings. Council may vote to excuse member's absence." Is that where you want to put in the time?
Well, if, Madam President, if you went in this direction, you would say, you would leave, leave the first two sentences. It would say, "Members are expected to attend regular council meetings, not later than the second regular council meeting following a meeting at which a member is absent. The council may vote to excuse that member's absence." The council may vote to excuse that member's absence." You would then delete the thing that says, "Before a vote is taken," and then you would continue with, "Absences may be excused by a parliamentary motion, the clerk shall record." So you would just, you would just delete that one sentence that says, "Before a vote is taken, to excuse the absence, the member who is absent must file a written explanation with the clerk, who shall provide a copy of the explanation to all members."
Mr. Jermaine?
Madam Chair, you know, I, I, I agree with, with Councilman Schron had to say, and what Councilwoman Simon had to say, as far as, I don't think these, the, the reason has to be precise, but I, I, I don't see anything wrong with someone saying there was a family emergency, illness, a business meeting, I'm out of town. We don't have, because if we gave specific reasons, then I think it would become a public record. But we, we, there should be a reason why you're not attending. You just, and I, I don't want to have to disclose specific, but if, if there is a business meeting, a family emergency, illness, so on, you don't have to disclose what that is. I, I don't see anything wrong with this rule as, as it stands.
But council's going to be responsible in terms of making a decision whether or not to vote to excuse. So council will have some knowledge that, you know, somebody was on vacation, or somebody was ill. I, I just don't see the necessity of making this written record. I mean, is, is, at some point, there's going to be a written record that says, "Jermaine missed six meetings for illnesses, oh, he's too sick to run for Ameriparma." I mean, you know, that, that's the, the record that's going to be reflected. If you miss a meeting, I, I just don't see the necessity of making that written, the record.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I can only go back to my previous life, where I come, I come from, and what, what our procedure was, was that the member missing the meeting would call the council president with the reason. If there was question from the council as to the reason, and if it was substantial enough, we would go into executive session, because it is, it, it usually is of a personal nature. If it is of a personal nature, it's a personnel situation, and, and, and personal in nature. That's what we would do, and then we would, we would, we would excuse for just cause at that meeting. I, I like the fact that you would keep in two weeks here, for the mere fact that you could be in a car accident, not be able to call the council president, and we'll give you another week to let the council president know what your excuse is, and, and then the council can vote accordingly. So at least we have, we have a reason, a person in charge, the council president, having been given a, a substantial reason for missing the, the meeting, and any member of council has the ability to go to the council president to find out how they're going to vote, if indeed they have concern as far as why that meeting, person missed that meeting. And there's no written record, but there is, there is a reason, and, and we, and we can feel comfortable that we're voting, justifiably so, to excuse a member, to excuse a member for missing a meeting. It seems to be the easiest way without a paper trail and a good cause.
All right. Do you want me to reread the, Mr. Brady? Because we're...
Mr. Schron was indicating...
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. The, a couple suggestions also might be that the two weeks, if you're going on a business trip, you're going to know two weeks before the business trip, not afterward, so there, there's no reason that you can't buffer it on both sides, two weeks before or after the regularly scheduled meeting. The only other comment I have is by changes over in 5C, with three now regularly scheduled meetings, if somebody misses two weeks, they theoretically could be in violation of this rule and be thrown off, because if we have now created every committee, every meeting as a regular meeting, without special meetings, within a two-week period of time, you could have actually, you could actually be changing this, the structure of this body. And I don't think that that was the intent of, of the three meeting, consecutive meeting miss. So I, I just suggest that perhaps we maybe want to come back and revisit some way of, of addressing that. So, so as, if somebody is in, on a, on a family vacation or a trip, and to Europe, two weeks is not an unreasonable period of time, then you could all of a sudden find out you're in violation of the, of this rule.
Madam President? Exactly. I was looking at that, too, because when you go back to the new 5C2, which gives the president the ability to add additional regular council meetings, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, exactly. I have a note. So maybe this, we should really emphasize all regular council meetings, council meetings that are scheduled at the organizational meeting.
Regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled at the organizational meeting, or whatever it is.
We can add that. Yes, Mr. Miller?
A clarification. The, the rule that allows the council president to call a meeting by notice of the clerk, those would not be regular council meetings, those would be special meetings. It's, it's only, it, it's the, it's the, when we amend the biennial schedule, which would be done by a motion of council, that's when you would have additional regular meetings.
No, but remember, Dale, we changed that rule to say that rather than having all these special meetings, that we would make those regular meetings?
That, but, but those have, that would have to be done by a motion of the council. I mean, if, if you just tell the clerk you're calling a meeting, that's a special meeting.
Right, okay.
If we, if we, if we use Rule 5C1, the council by a motion of council may change the regular day, or the, or number two, the council may by motion of council add regular council meetings. Well, then you would get regular council meetings.
So if, for that, under this rule, I'd come in and say, you know, we were not supposed to have a meeting next week, but we got 20 pieces of legislation we really need to pass. Can I have a vote to have next meeting a regular meeting? That would comply with the rule.
You could do that, yes.
Okay, so that would comply with the rule. So that would be adding a regular meeting.
That would be adding a regular meeting.
And we wouldn't have to suspend the rules and all that, to make it, but then you're saying it conflicts with this, in terms of having people missing another meeting.
Right. Madam President?
Y'all know what we want. The thing, do we have the right word? Do we have the right language?
Someone suggested we say, "All members are expected to attend all regularly scheduled meetings." All regularly scheduled, regular meetings?
Madam President, those meetings scheduled at the organizational meeting, so we all have our calendar then for two years.
It's because obviously if someone, someone plans something...
And like, somebody wants to go to Europe, planning a trip around those dates, and then, you know, in advance, and then you, so that would be it, the organizational meeting scheduled.
Madam President?
Yes.
We're heading into a mess that I think is bad. And what, what we're heading toward is, is a thing that there would be three different kind of council meetings. There would be a regular council meeting that was set at the organizational meeting. We would have a regular council meeting that was not set at the organizational meeting, which would seem to have a lower status, and then we'd have a special meeting. And I don't think we should do that. I, I think that either, and I think, I mean, the charter uses the language "regular council meetings." If we want to be able to amend the annual schedule so that we can have additional regular meetings, which will allow us not to have to do, suspend rules even on third, if we want that advantage, and we want to make those regular meetings, I think we also have to accept that, that it's going to bump up the attendance requirement, because the charter language says if, if you miss three regular council meetings, if not excused, well, that's a problem.
But we give the opportunity to have, I mean, the absence excused.
Madam Chairperson?
Mr. Brady?
We do. Attendance has been very good in the council, and I appreciate what the councilman's saying. I don't think it's that complicated, but, but what I, what I'm not hearing is a resolution to the, to the issue. Once a schedule's been set, and a member makes plans eight months in advance to do something, you're surely not saying that that council member is then subject to the same rules as the, as the, as the charter designates in terms of a regular council meeting, because then you have a different kind of a dilemma than the one that you're, that you're discussing. You put a council member at a complete, you know, at a, at an impossible disadvantage. And I, so I think that I prefer three different levels of council meetings, then I don't find that that hard to follow, that, than, than to put a council member in some position totally unintended.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
I just don't think under the charter that you can have it both ways, because one provision of the charter says that, that legis, that ordinances and resolutions have to be heard at three different regular council meetings, or else the rules have to be suspended. A second provision of the charter says that, that if a council member is absent from three consecutive regular meetings, unless excused, that they have a problem. And I don't think that a meeting can be a regular meeting in one sense and, and not the other. It's, either, either a meeting is a regular meeting, or it's not a regular meeting. I just, I just don't think that, that the charter allows for the, for, for two different levels of regular meetings.
Madam Chairperson?
Mr. Brady?
If I may, just for a second, it's, it's Section 12.03, subsection four of the charter, and it says, "In the case of a member of council," you know, in terms of forfeiture of office, "but in the case of a member of council fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings of the council without being excused by the council." And in 5C2, you are making those meetings to be a regular meeting, so you want to be careful when you're providing a mechanism to excuse, that you're able, you know, if you have three that are now regular meetings, but the mechanism is only for the meetings that are scheduled at the organizational meeting, that could be an issue in terms of, you know, you may have another regular meeting that you're not providing a mechanism to excuse for that. So I would only raise that issue in terms of, you know, you don't want to run, maybe, maybe the better way is to give the wider timeframe in which to, to do the excuse, you know, the, the time limit in which you, you provide the mechanism in which to excuse the meeting, as opposed to changing whether you do it at the organizational, because you could run into a meeting that you have no mechanism in terms of how to excuse.
Mr. Brady?
It seems like one suggestion might be, if we have a, if we're in a quagmire here, which we don't want to be in for very long, I'm sure.
We, we got to move on.
That, that we're just going to have to forego these regular council meetings, and call them special council meetings, and deal with the burden of more parliamentary procedure until we can change the charter, perhaps, to make a distinguish.
So in other words, go back and delete this section 52C that allows us to create these regular meetings?
Correct.
Those were, those were additions, so in other words, don't adopt those?
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
This is one that, 5, 5, 2, 5C2, that provides that the council may add regular meetings, and may change the annual schedule. So we could delete those, then we would be back in the same situation.
We'll be back to...
Suspend the rules a lot.
We'll be back to, be back to a more cumbersome process, but, but we can't seem to find a clear way out of this, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think attendance has been great, and, and, and even if, even if, if someone misses a few meetings, I'm sure it's going to be for good reason, and, and we're going to excuse them, which we can do, we can vote to do at any regular meeting. You know, you know, I, I think, I don't think we should change 5C1. I think it creates great flexibility for us. I, I think if, if anything, before, I'd want to change 531. I'd, I'd want to say that you can have longer to, to excuse an absence, you know, or maybe say that rather than, than not, not later than, than a second regular council meeting, you say not later than 30 days, you know, so that if you have a bunch of meetings close together, you, you got plenty of time, or even delete the time limit, you know. But I, I think, I think 5C1 helps us. It enables us, and, and I think if we change the regular schedule, we're going to do it with a lot of notice, and we're going to, we're going to check with member schedules, and, you know, I, so that's what I think.
All right, so let's, let's, yes.
No, I, I, I'm not saying, I don't think we're saying, or Councilman Brady's saying to take out 5C1, are you? I thought you were saying 5C2 and 3, to take those out. Brady?
I've really said everything I have to say about this particular issue.
Did you say, I just want to be clear with that, I'm sorry. Did you say 5?
Well, I thought that because there were at least three different opinions about what the charter allowed, and, and what the council wanted to do, that it would be easier just to revert back to the more cumbersome special meeting procedures than to try to solve the problem any other way, and that's... I'm finished.
I, I, I tend to agree with you, Councilman Brady, but I just want to be clear when I'm looking at these rules, then, what actually we would be deleting from the amended version, and I think that's just 5C2 and 3. Or does 1 have to come out?
Well, if we don't, if we, if we don't change, if we allow for the creation of the regular meetings, the, the add to the schedule, then we would still have the ability to have the person excused by council vote. So I still think that we should just leave it the way we have, with deleting that sentence, "Before a vote is taken," and just delete that and get with the rule. And 5H, as it is, with the deletion of the one sentence, the second sentence, or the third sentence.
Madam President, is that a motion?
Yes.
I second.
All right, let me read it. 5H would then read, "Absence of members. Members are expected to attend all regular council meetings." There should be a period, there's not.
Right.
"Not later than the second regular meeting, following a meeting at which a member is absent. The council may vote to excuse that member's absence. The absence may be excused by parliamentary motion. The clerk shall record the absence, the presence or absence of each member of, at each council meeting, and shall record which absences are excused. As provided in Article 12, Section 3 of the Charter, any member who is absent from three consecutive regular meetings without being excused by council shall forfeit his or her office in council."
Madam President, did you take out the written explanation?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, so I understand your amendment on 5H. Are you saying that we're leaving in 5C2 and 3?
Yes, yes.
It puts us in conflict, I believe, want to put us in conflict with the, potentially with the charter? Not, not in conflict, but it could put us in a situation where if we have meetings scheduled on the, on the second and fourth Tuesdays, it's in the, it's in the organizational meeting, and it's done, and we schedule a vacation to be gone over two weeks, and a third regular meeting is scheduled pursuant to 5C2 or 3, or N2 and 3, that's put in that middle Wednesday or middle, middle Tuesday, then you miss three meetings.
That's right.
And, and you may, and look, we all get along great now, and there's no partisan environment, not, you know, that we act in a nonpartisan manner, but it could get ugly for someone down the road to take advantage of a situation where a council member had already planned a family vacation, a wedding, whatever it is, surgery, and all of a sudden they're out of office. So I would, I would, I would be in favor of 5H in your amendment, but also eliminating 5C2 and 5C3.
Madam President, that's what I was trying to indicate, exactly.
So...
I can live with that.
Would, so would the chair be amenable to a friendly, or the...
Yes. Yes.
Madam President, it would take, it would take a vote of a majority. A majority of this council would have to refuse to excuse a series of absences. You know, I, I think that, I think that what, what we're talking about doing, if we, if we delete 5C2 and, 5C2 and 3, is hamstringing ourselves, just because of the, the unlikely prospect down the road of, of some totally unreasonable conflict.
Madam President?
Madam Pres-
And, and, and I don't, I don't think we ought to do that. I would, I would add, though, that if, that if you insist on doing it, you should only delete 5C2, because, because we've had in place for a long time, and I don't think we want to change that, that, that the council could change the date of, of an already scheduled regular council meeting, and, and if, and if such a change is made, we want the, we want the clerk to post that change, you know.
Yeah, because we can have a change because of snow or something.
Yeah, you know, so, so if you got to do it, I would, I would only delete 5C2, but I don't, I think we should, I think we should give ourselves that flexibility.
Madam President, I'm typically not a conspiracy theorist here, however, there, this is the uglies of uglies, and I'm going to bring up this, this analogy. If a council member has a meeting, has an, an excuse, is out for two meetings because of whatever, all right, so, council could, if they were vindictive, reschedule a regular meeting to be in conflict with the third provision Charter, if we want to be vindictive. And I, I think it's our role to make sure that we don't put us today, or a future council in a situation where they could change a regular, regular meeting to put somebody in a conflict with the Charter, which would make them forfeit their office.
Council President?
Yes, Mr., wait, Mr. Simon's been trying to get away.
I'm sorry.
I just, I agree, I, I don't think we're hamstrung by taking out 5C2 to enable the President or council to schedule special meetings. There's no problem with that. That's not a difficult task. We've been doing it now for four months. It's, it's easy. Our clerk's probably ingrained in her brain, she could do it in her sleep. It's not that anybody's going to be hamstrung by calling it a special meeting and complying with the procedure.
Special, yeah.
So when you call it a regular meeting, that complicates, that complicates things so many different ways, then it's not necessary. The cost benefit analysis, I think, we would have to say, take out the 5C2, and, and, and just leave regular when it comes to excusing absences. And it's true, we can really complicate our lives if we, we do this.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Brady?
I would agree with Councilwoman Simon, and also, Councilman Greenspan, I don't think you, you know, have to be a conspiracy theorist to realize that you're really talking about protecting the, the rights of a minority member of the council, and I don't mean that necessarily a partisan way, but it is quite possible that someone could become such a problem for a lot of members of council in the future, that they, that they, they may use bad judgment and, and take away the, and, and, you know, basically overturn the rights of the councilperson who has been elected, duly elected. So I think the protection of, of Councilman Greenspan's rights or override the other issues.
All right, so where, we're going to delete 5C2, is that right? And then we'll leave my motion as we had, as I read it before, just taking out that sentence about the written notice.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller. If we get through this, the rest will be raised.
I would like to take, I would, I would like to take one more shot at compromise.
Yes, Mr. Clay.
You know, I think, I think we're going down a wrong road, because we have, we have just, we have just decided that we're going to set the annual schedule for two years. And, and, and now we're going to say that we cannot add regular meetings to, to the annual schedule. We may decide we want to change the annual schedule around, and, and so, what I'm offering about further compromise is, is that, that in rule C, C2, you put in, you put in a really large amount of notice, like 60 days' notice, that, that...
Madam, Madam President, I'm sorry, the, the, the push, to my colleague, the pushback could be, if, if you've got a family event that you know is six months, eight months down the road, 60 days might not be, or vacation that you've pre-booked, or, might not be enough time to make the appropriate changes. I, I would, I guess where we are right now is, Madam President, you've made a motion, you've amended your motion, Mr. Miller seconded your motion, so if, if he doesn't amend...
Madam, Madam President?
Yes.
I just got to withdraw my second, shut up, and vote no. I just think, I just don't agree with this.
Madam President?
Mr. Simon?
I can go back to my original recommendation, that we set these scheduled meetings every January, so we have the annual calendar, we can schedule our vacations, and still take out 52, without the concern that Mr. Miller just brought up about having two years to have to deal with. And, so, that would be my only caveat, but other than that, I'm with Councilman Greenspan and Brady on taking out 5C2.
Madam President, I'll second your motion.
So, I don't even know what a motion is anymore. Yeah, just to take out this language.
And to delete 5, 5C2.
And to delete 5, 5C2, okay. Mr. Germana?
I'm probably going to regret saying what I'm thinking, but, you know, we're not that far down the road from a county corruption scandal, and, and people had it up to here. And I've been proud that, you know, things are changing, we're tightening things down. What, and, we've been talking 40 minutes about excusing, I mean, why do we need to be loosey goosey about this? I, I like the idea about being disciplined, you shall attend meetings, and you need to be excused, and if you miss three, I don't think there's going to be the conspiracy. I, I trust the people are going to put in, at least a majority of reasonable people, that are going to excuse people if they've got a reason for not being there. The other thing is, you know, just recently, I have run into people with some bad luck, I mean, bad luck, and it's, it's very possible that someone's going to have bad luck and miss three meetings in a row. But I trust whoever the public puts in here, the majority of this council is going to understand that this person had some bad luck, and they missed three meetings. So, forget this, I'd like to just leave this as is. Keep 2, 5C. There's nothing wrong with having extra regular meetings, and if you can't make it, because there's a conflict, I trust the majority of council's going to excuse you.
There's nothing, Madam President, loosey goosey about trying to protect the future members of this council. In fact, it's contrary to loosey goosey, that which we're trying to do here, is to protect the minority status of these members, and there's no reason why we wouldn't want to incorporate that into the rules.
I still, I think we have, my, my second withdrawn, but, but Mr. Greenspan, has now indicated a second, so, we are now at deleting the requirement that you have to put your explanation writing, and also deleting the addition of the regular means, is that right? 2C. All right, is there any discussion? Let's call for 5C. All right, there. All right, is there, is there any other unreadiness? Can we call for a vote? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Wait, Madam, wait, Mr....
No, the only, just thing, I wanted to clarify, to make sure that, that everybody's on the same page, is I think the discussion encompassed two different things. Number one is the addition of additional regular meetings, and then, then the other one was the rescheduling of regular meetings. The rescheduling of regular meetings is in 5C1. The addition of regular meetings is in 5C2. Everybody's been talking about 5C2 and 3. 3 is simply the requirement to post it on the website, not affecting, I just wanted to make sure that...
Right, 3 will stay in, because we, we could stay, we could have a snowstorm, and we just have to reschedule it for the next day or something, or power failure or something.
Wait, wait, hold on, Madam President, I'm sorry. Does that...
Do we keep 1 and 3?
Oh, I don't care what you do, I just wanted to clarify that.
3 just allows us to reschedule.
Within three days?
Yeah.
Within three days of the original meeting being canceled?
Right.
Is that what that says?
Right.
In rescheduling, but does it say the meeting will be rescheduled within three days?
No.
So that's where, Mr., I'm looking to Mr. McLough, it just says it will be rescheduled within three, shall provide three days' notice, but it doesn't say the meeting will be rescheduled within three days, which could then still put you in the situation that I explained earlier, where three meetings would fall into a, a two-week gap, you know, a two-week scheduled period. So I guess I'm looking for some guidance, Mr. McLough.
No, I, the way I read this is, is the, the notice is, and we have the drafter here, but the way I read it is that the, you, you have to provide the three days' notice, but it's, it's not saying when the, the new meeting will take place. So I think it's whenever the council wants to meet, as long as, it can't be less than three days, that's what it's saying, but it could be longer than three days, but...
The, the notice or the meeting?
The, the meeting can't be less than three days from when the notice is issued for the rescheduling.
All right, can we call for a roll? Call a vote on this? Do you understand what we're voting on?
You're going to have to restate that.
All right, what we would do is, we're going to delete the written requirement in, in Rule 5H on page 7 of 23, and also delete Rule 5C2 on page 6 of 23. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think we should separate that.
You want to separate them?
Yeah, because you, you can be for taking out the sentence and keeping 52 there.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a problem with keeping 52 either. All right, let's, let's vote on Rule 5H as amended. Okay, that was with the deleting, deletion of the written requirement with the clerk. All right, we call the roll?
So are you amending your...
No, it's the same one. Yeah, well, I guess we are amending, we are amending this motion. Mr. Greenspan, are you consent to that?
Yes.
All right. All right, we're only voting on whether or not we're going to delete the third sentence of Rule 5H, about the written, about the written notice. Okay?
So, so for item number 5H, under "Absence of Members," we're deleting the sentence that states, "Before a vote is taken to excuse the absence, the member who was absence must, absent must file a written explanation to, with the clerk, who shall provide a copy of the explanation to all members."
Right, and the rest remains the same.
Okay. Approving that. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schran?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 2.
Okay, that, that Section 5H is so amended, then let's reconsider a Rule 5C2. This is a provision that would allow for, the council may, by motion of council, add additional regular meetings to the annual schedule, or the bi-annual schedule, provided that any regular council meeting shall take place at least seven days after the motion of council is adopted. And this was, the purpose for this was to keep us from having to suspend the rules on every single item when we have a special meeting. This would be, and I'm, I'm not sure we'll need as many of these special, additional meetings as we have in the past. We've had meetings just about every week, we're pretty much caught up, and I don't think this is going to happen as much as has happened before. And working with the clerk, we've probably got things coming out of committee at some regular basis, but I think that we do need the opportunity to provide for an additional meeting if we need it. So there is advantage to keeping this. Mr. Schran?
Madam President, I, I move eliminate the Section 5C2, which would then renumber 5C3 as 5C2.
So you want to eliminate it?
That?
Yeah, and discussion is that, we're not eliminating the ability to still have your special meeting, should you need it. If we find that we're backed up, what it does is at least addresses the problems identified in 5H that potentially could come back to, to haunt us. And so that's the only reason that, that 5C, 5C2 should be eliminated, in my opinion.
Okay.
Council President?
All right, so we'll be suspending the rules a lot with the special meetings?
That's fine.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm, I'm more desirous of giving the council the best operational flexibility, and I don't think, I don't think we're going to go out to shaft somebody on the three-meeting rule. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote to keep 53C2.
I'd like to keep it also, okay. All right, is there any discussion?
Madam President, the only advantage of keeping 5C2 is so that it's a regular meeting, as opposed to a special meeting, and, and that gives us the advantage of not having to go through all the procedural rules that, that go with having a special meeting.
Yes.
Thanks.
But it, Madam President, but it does bring in that second half, or the last half of 5H, and brings a potential violation at that point in time.
Madam, Madam President?
Mr. Greenspan?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Schran. It, it goes back to my original point. You, a, a regular meeting could be called, once again, I use that two-week, second and fourth week, council could call a meeting when some, in between that period, and which would put somebody in violation with the Charter, if, if the absence is unexcused. But you run the risk, whether it's this council, or another council, or whatever the circumstances, for some type of, of vindictive action, and I'm not even sure what the appeal is. If, if, if it's viewed as unexcused, and, and somebody has to remove, be removed, I don't know if you go to the, I don't know what court you go to for this. It's a Charter violation.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
I think that, that a special meeting kind of creates the impression of something of an emergency. You know, I think that, that when we just can foresee that we have a lot of business that, that has to be handled, and we can give plenty of notice, I think adding a regular meeting is a good thing to do.
We're splitting too many hairs here, Council President. I, I think we should move forward with this motion, and clearly what we're trying to prevent is this unforeseen and unlikely tyranny of the majority, but I do agree with the, I do agree with the sentiment.
All right, let's call the roll. The, the motion is to delete this section, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Delete 5C2?
Yes.
And make 5C3, 5C2.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, approving that motion, Ms. Conley?
No.
Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
This is to eliminate, to delete?
Delete 5C2, and renumber 3 to 2.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Schran?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, section...
7 to 4.
Okay, section 5C2 is deleted, and 3 will move up to become 2. All right, let's move along, I think the other ones are easier.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I just, on, on 5C1, I just want to be clear, because I'm not sure it reads the way we're intending it to read, as far as council shall provide at le, I'm halfway through, "Council shall provide at least three days' notice in rescheduling." It just says that there'll be three-day notice as to when the neck, when the meeting will be rescheduled, it doesn't say the meeting will be held three days from the original date, which might put us in the same situation of the item that we just voted to remove.
Madam President?
Yeah.
He's correct, Dave, Councilman Greenspan is correct. It doesn't say it has to be rescheduled within three days, just that we have to give notice.
So how would you change it?
I, well...
It doesn't say it has to be rescheduled within three days, just that we have to give notice.
So how would you change it?
Well, I would maybe, that's a good point. I mean, could we schedule it to be within, the meeting will be rescheduled within three days of the original meeting? Or the items just roll over to the next regularly scheduled council meeting? Or we schedule a special meeting?
Madam President?
Yes.
There are gonna be times when we can foresee that a date is scheduled for a regular council meeting, that a problem arises with a date. And there are also gonna be emergencies. I don't think this is gonna happen a lot. I mean, we need to have the flexibility to reschedule a meeting. I think we're... You know, I'll just stop at that. We need to be able to reschedule a meeting.
Mr. McLough, let's get some words of wisdom here from our legal counsel. We've got two more pages here to go there.
Sure, the only thing I wanted to clarify on this is that's talking about rescheduling an actual pre-existing meeting. So let's say to run into the three council issue within one week, the actual regular meeting that was scheduled two weeks out and the other one that was scheduled another two weeks out, you know, you're talking about a six-week period, you're bringing all those within one week, and then you'll have, you know, a whole month when there is no regular meeting happening. It looks funny when you do that, that's all, you know, so I, it's a different situation when you're rescheduling a pre-existing meeting as opposed to just adding meetings that were not there, because that means that the, you know, the meeting that's gonna happen two weeks from now and another four weeks from now, another six weeks from now, are now all of a sudden within one week, and then you don't have any other regular meetings for the remaining six weeks.
That's not gonna happen, all right.
But Madam President, what's happening is we effectively, between the second and fourth meeting, meet twice within 14 days. So it's not a month, but what, this just says the meeting will be rescheduled within three days. It doesn't give any prescribed deadline as to when the meeting will be held. So it is conceivable that a meeting could be postponed, rescheduled, for a time that would put someone within that 14-day window, and it's considered a regular meeting, which would then put them in violation of the charter.
Well, that's kind of this three regular meetings.
It would be, because this is a reschedule of a regular meeting. Maybe what we say is, if that meet, here's the theory, I'm not wordsmithing it right now, but if that meeting is a rescheduled regular council meeting will be considered a special council meeting. I don't, I'm trying to think how else to, I'm trying to think how else we can word it. I understand the intention, I'm just trying to figure out how we can word it in such a way as to not put anyone in violation of the charter because a meeting was canceled because of a snow day. And that's probably the most realistic, one of the most realistic explanations for a meeting being rescheduled because of bad weather.
The only clarification I would add is if you do that, then you have to cancel the, because you haven't canceled the regular meeting that's already scheduled. In rescheduling it, you made it a special meeting, you still have that regular meeting that you haven't canceled, so I just...
Well, it says we can cancel. It says we, council may by motion change the daytime place or cancel a regular council meeting.
Why don't we just leave this and go back through and come back to this? Or, because we're gonna, we have like two other pages, three other pages, and... Yeah, let's move along, and we're not adopting these tonight, we're just, we can consider them. Let's move on to item, I think the rest of these are coming from Fung Tree. On item, page eight of 23, do we need to delete the word proclamation in item 7A? "Council may take action only on ordinances, resolutions, and proclamations." I thought we had deleted proclamations.
Madam President?
Yes.
I thought we kept it in.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue about it, all right. I think we did before. Item, page nine of 23, item 7D. This is a change from proclamation to the ceremonial resolution. This is an addition, I believe. The ceremonial resolution that Mr. Miller talked about.
Madam President, correct, we're adding that rather than deleting the other.
Madam President?
Yes.
Getting back, getting back to 7A, as we now have it, a proclamation is not a formal action of the council, so maybe deleting proclamations in 7A would be a good idea.
Yeah, that's why I thought, because it wasn't a formal action.
I think you're right about that.
All right. If we go on to item 7D, this is the change, this is the adding of the ceremonial resolution. Item on page 10 of 23, we refer to proclamation again. Do we need to keep that or state, "Any non-legislative power of council or actions not subject to executive vote other than proclamations," do we need to keep that in? "May be exercised by adoption of a resolution in the form of a motion of council."
Madam Clerk, where are we?
We're on page 10 of 23. At the top of the page, item one. "Any non-legislative power of council or actions not subject to executive vote other than proclamations."
Other than...
"May be exercised by adoption of a resolution."
Other than ceremonial resolutions.
Okay, change it to ceremonial, okay.
Right, that we didn't, that's an error that we didn't carry over, the change that we had talked about.
All right, item 7G on the same page, actually is a new change, is a new addition. "At any point prior to a final passage of legislation, council, any member may add or withdraw his or her name as a sponsor by notifying the clerk." So something may be submitted and you want to add your name, or it's been amended substantially and you want to withdraw your name. Mr. Brady?
Yes, the idea is to give people the flexibility to get on or off of legislation as it changes, or even they possibly change their mind because of something that they've heard in the discussion. So it just gives you the flexibility to sponsor or co-sponsor legislation. And I'm hoping that this means that even after a bill is passed, you've been satisfied enough with the discussion and with the decision that if you want to become a co-sponsor of the bill, you can add your name. That's commonly done in the legislature, I'm not saying that makes it right, but you, maybe it's something that hasn't been on your radar screen, but someone else has done some work that you consider to be work that you approve of and you want to add your name to the bill. Why shouldn't you be able to?
Any discussion on that?
What this protects you also from is that there is a tendency, sometimes unfortunately, for people to take exclusive right over legislation when there is broad support for it. And actually intentionally, and I've seen this happen in other bodies, intentionally, you know, try to avoid having people co-sponsor legislation so they can maintain some kind of personal ownership over the legislation and its legacy.
Conspiracy.
Madam President?
Another conspiracy. Yes, was, Mr.?
Madam President, in the case of the legislature, there's two houses, so you put your name on it after final passage as a statement of final support, of support as it goes over to the other house. So there was some discussion that maybe it should have to be done. In our case, when it's passed out of council, we're done. But I have no objection. And if we want to say at any point at or prior to final passage, you know, so that, you know, I don't have any problem with that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One problem I see here is that we've kind of changed the practice from a roll call vote to all those in favor or against, okay? Generally, practice at Paramus City Council is an example. We would have roll call votes on any final action. And at that time, yes, and please add my name. Yes, or please delete my name, or no, please delete my name. That would happen, and you'd have that opportunity with the roll call. But if we're just gonna have all those in favor, yea, then people have to, at the end of that, please record that my vote.
But any member can ask for a roll call vote on any item.
I'm just saying that if we're gonna have this rule and allowing people to add their name at the time of final passage, we have to allow them that opportunity.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just have a concern of how long we would allow people to add their name and how challenging this becomes for the clerk if, say, some months down the line, for some political reasons, you know, one of the members of this body decides that I should be on this bill as a sponsor, you know, as we're approaching the campaign, and then having the clerk go back and unnecessarily adding someone as a sponsor.
Add that day.
Saying, is there gonna be some type of, you know, I'd recommend that we have some type of...
Before the final vote? Is this before the final vote? Vote, you can add it or delete it.
Right. The recommendations that's on the table right now is that the language be at or prior, or...
The final passage.
At or any point prior.
Or at, the language was that after passage, someone could add their name.
Oh, "At any point prior to final passage of the legislation, council, any member may add or withdraw his name." Is there a name? Mr. Miller?
I would suggest one of two things. As the rule, as the rule is currently written, what's envisioned is that that any time before when the roll call or the voice vote is taken, that somebody would just ask the president for recognition and say, "I would like to add my name." I'm also totally comfortable with people being able to do so on the same day of the council meeting, immediately after the roll call is made. And if people want to do that, then we should say something like, "Immediately following final passage of legislation or at any point prior, any member may add or withdraw." But I certainly, I certainly wouldn't want it to extend anything beyond being done right after the vote is taken.
I have a general suggestion. We have made some progress this evening, and I'm sort of having a brain drain, and we have a meeting that's supposedly in 10 minutes. We had agreed or voted to adopt the new rules by the next meeting. I think we've made great progress, but I want everybody satisfied with these rules and make sure that everybody's comfortable with it, we have to live with them. What if we continue this meeting of the whole and submit these things that we voted on tonight as a draft number 10? And then I have given you my little cheat sheet. We've only got up to item, I think, 18, and there's like 26 or something. And then allow people to then reconsider these again. Is there any consensus for that? Right, because, I mean, I know that this has been very, very taxing, and we've been through, and we still got like another half. And one of the ones I know is gonna be somewhat contentious is this idea of, I wish everyone would look at item nine on this parliamentary rule. It provides that we go by Robert's rules, but then Mr. Miller has included some other items. He feels very strongly about them. I don't, I tend to disagree with him on it, and I know this is gonna be a long discussion, so I don't even think we should even get into this one tonight, because we've got a meeting supposedly in about 10 minutes. Is there any feeling or consensus regarding that possibility?
Ma'am?
Mr. Greenspan?
When would you recommend that we reconvene? This meeting?
We have a regular meeting on the 26th. But aren't we scheduled to vote on the adoption of the rules or other rules run out on the 26th? But on the 26th, we could also continue the existing rules, is that right?
We could.
We could.
So, Madam President, with the recommendation, I don't have an ethics committee meeting that Tuesday, so there's nothing prior to a four o'clock meeting if we want to back it up. Then with the recommend, if that's the choice here with Good Friday and Easter Monday, I'm not sure what everyone's schedule is, but the, would the recommendation be that we have a, an item on the agenda to continue the current ordinance should we not come to resolution?
Yeah, I think that's what we should do. We should have an ordinance so that we can continue the current rules. I would even say for three weeks to a month, because these are very, very weighty issues. And we're not, we're operating on the current rules, and we get these new rules, we need to do them right.
Madam Chairperson, I have to say that we have, I think we're very, very close to finishing these up. I'm a little concerned if we drag it out further that we'll find more things to disagree over.
True, true.
And that I would agree with Councilman Greenspan, I think, that's what I'm doing. That we just make a longer day of next Tuesday?
Okay.
And finish this work up.
But then do we have a final version to be submitted? I mean, can we end that process if we, whatever changes we make on Tuesday afternoon?
Find that we are unable to come to a consensus, which I'm prepared to come to a consensus regardless of where we are at. You know, I suppose we could extend the rule, we could extend it at that time. I would be convinced that I would be ready to like, you know...
But we will, then we'll update...
Support the rules regardless of my opposition to them at that point.
We'll update this draft nine to draft 10?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like, I would like... Well, we've accepted the amendments, you know, so we just, I don't think we even need another motion. The current version is the version with the amendments that we've voted on today, and we'll create a draft 10.
Okay, so then we would adjourn this meeting of the whole until, what time? One o'clock on, one o'clock or four o'clock?
Twenty-sixth. One o'clock.
Because we do have a work session on four for next week, because this is, that gives us a marathon meeting from one to eight o'clock, which is a lot.
What is scheduled for, Madam Chairperson?
There is no schedule right at this point in time. It would be just going over the items for that evening's, the 26th agenda at this point.
All right, so let's do it at four o'clock. So we adjourn this meeting of the whole? Yeah, okay. All right, so there is our motion to adjourn this meeting of the whole regarding the rules until four o'clock on the 26th?
I'm moved.
All those in favor, okay, by saying aye? All right, ayes have it, we are adjourned, and we'll start our council meeting in about 10 minutes. Yeah, everybody went for the restroom. I know, I told them we were building. I know. I told them we were building.